It is.
I have to get 12.
Do we stand and say the pledge? I plead.
The allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. I see no public today. Do I have a motion to approve the agenda in the minutes dated March fourteenth? Motion by Carter, second by Stecker. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Unanimous. Discussion to a decision to review and approve claims and conservation claims. You had them on the iPad, everybody had a chance to look at them. Anything, anybody have any irregularities?
I had a question, just I didn't know what it was. Trying to find it here. It was on. Gardner, what does Gardner Thompson?
That's our auditing firm.
Oh, that's, okay, okay.
That's the company name.
Okay.
Anything else? Do I have a motion to approve the claims and conservation claims?
So moved.
Mr. Stecker moved to approve, do I have a second?
I'll second.
Second by Whacter. Any comments on them? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried, unanimous. It is the twenty-first today. How come that was all turned ahead, ahead of time?
You want to sign it or just?
I'll just stamp the heck out of it.
That'll work.
Yeah, that's it.
Yeah. You can use it.
No, that's fine, I have a red one, but I didn't want to sign it.
No. I got another one here, says Bolton and me. This one says, I want to plead P D. That was Dan this morning.
Good.
Good. So are you Irish, that you celebrated then?
Well, I'm more Scottish than I am Irish, so you have a Scotsman at an Irish place and back in the day that didn't go over so well. I did well for the home team.
There you go.
Yeah, Dan, go ahead.
Okay, well, just some updated metrics for the month of February for my department. We had forty-eight phone calls and sixty-six messages. We had fifty walk-ins, thirty scheduled appointments. One of those outside the office, I did a home appointment. We did three transports and for some odd reason we had to run on getting hearing aids repaired, eight of them for the month. Currently in my system, what I'm tracking is eleven hundred and thirty-two records so far. I usually add about between two and five a week or thereabouts. Number of claims that are in the system to VA right now is forty-eight. Six are ready for decision, I keep checking those daily. Number of claims under development, which I'm currently working on is eight. I'm in the process of two supplemental claims and appeals and we had two VA healthcare enrollments. And then insofar as training, I am reserved for our spring conference in Des Moines. That'll be at the Holiday Inn down by the airport this year as opposed to Embassy Suites. We also have some new CBSO training coming up that is also falling in line with our spring conference. Reserved for the National Conference out in Wisconsin, that'll be in Madison in June. And then working to develop the agenda for the spring training for the new CBSOs. As far as outreach, been working with our commissioners, going to do a Veterans Information Night at the Summit Center in Bancroft, April sixth. And we're going to do one, one session from two to three and another one from six to seven. And it's just going to be a basic overview and update on the PACT Act with all those changes as it applies to the different generation of veterans. And then a little bit of information on the VA healthcare enrollment and encouragement to do so. Still working with the Iowa Workforce Development on the Veteran Military Appreciation Day in Spencer. That'll be held on June seventeenth. We have another meeting, I think, in April, I'm just waiting for the agenda. Continuing to develop the PSA and the ads for commissioner selection. The goal in working with the commissioners is to advertise April and May, do the selection interview in June. Do the swearing in and onboard in July is kind of the timeframe that they wanted to go with. Did provide a couple handouts, just wanted to kind of show you this weekly report for the PACT Act. This is something that National puts out. Interestingly to note, I don't think they were quite as prepared for this as far as VA. There's an eighty-three thousand, five hundred and thirty-one claim backlog. Of which, three thousand, four hundred and ninety-one of that is Iowa's. So, things have really picked up under that recent legislation that was signed by the president. And then I also just provided you a, a twenty-twenty-two National Veteran Suicide Prevention Annual Report. Mental health is getting a lot of attention in the VA circles. And right now there were sixty-one hundred and forty-six vet suicides for twenty-twenty. Now that's actually down three hundred and forty-three from twenty-nineteen. So it's trending down, but VA also recognizes that there's a lot of more work to do. And I see a lot of that in, in some of my claims, especially with our younger veterans that are suffering from BTS. But the trend is, is going down and that's what they're looking for, so that's a good thing. The other thing was, I just provided you a emergency treatment, kind of a flyer that I've been handing out to veterans. So if I have veterans that are enrolled in VA healthcare and they're fully vested. If they have an emergency medically and they need to be seen by a hospital locally and being treated in a civilian facility. This kind of walks the dog, if you will, by calling a hotline number. And what this does is it triggers action for consideration of payment by VA to help with some of those causes. And so I'm trying to push that out there to make sure that the veterans are aware of it. I know our, our regional hospital is aware of it, they've actually got it posted in their emergency room. The community process excellence folks out there and the billing folks are getting a lot better at understanding the various levels of care that are paid for by VA. So we're making some headway in that regard. Subject to your questions, that's all I've got. Going to start picking up a little bit more now that the, the weather's getting nice and vets are getting out, so that's what I got going on.
Nice. Do you have any like, information or handouts or whatever for your outreach activity?
I do, I just have to print them off. There, there are several flyers in, in what VA has done. Because PACT Act covers a lot of ground. So they made some flyers that said, okay, if you're of the Vietnam War era, here's how you're affected by this. If you're a Persian Gulf veteran, here's how you're affected by this. And so there's different flyers and I'm, I'm looking at printing about twenty to twenty-five of each of those to be able to hand out. And then I'll be taking my appointment book with me. And then that way, if the veteran on site says, hey, I'd like to set an appointment, come down, see you next week, we can get it captured and, and go ahead and get that taken care of, so.
If you think of it when you're printing them out, if you want to send them to us, send an email, because I could maybe put some of the Facebook and stuff too.
Oh, awesome, okay, yeah, absolutely, you bet, you bet. There's about three or four of them.
Yep, that's fine.
Okay, sounds good.
And then if you want to put some on the counter out here underneath the bulletin board, feel free to.
Oh, okay.
I think there's some slots available there too.
All right, will do, you bet. Thank you.
Yep.
Thanks, Dan.
Have a good week.
Yep.
Thank you. Thank you.
Next on the agenda is to approve, approve the certificate of payment for the retainerage of the courthouse roof project.
I asked Willie to come in in case you had any questions, you should have all the information in your packets.
Engineer walked it and it looks like he said everything's good. We've had no issues at all, have we?
Nope.
None.
So, I did want to talk to you a little bit about when this project was approved by ARPA. The only information that was given to ARPA for approval was the actual roof project, not the engineering costs. So ARPA approved the hundred and eighty-six thousand, but ARPA did not know about the engineering costs. Some of the engineering costs have been paid out of ARPA, which is fine. So what I want to know from you guys is if you want me to take the remainder of that amount out of our building project fund regular, which we have plenty of money in there, or if you want me to present that amount back to ARPA, which we're going to be co-essing whether or not we have enough funds or not, to see if they'll approve that additional amount as well.
I would say just take it out of the building.
And that's kind of where I was leaning, but I just kind of wanted to.
Do we need to update the resolution for this stuff to get the stuff that's already been paid for?
Yes, so what we'll probably do is just have another one that, another resolution that adds that amount in so that there's no issues in what, what it's been paid for.
Okay.
And, and the amount won't change, it'll still be the same amount, but just so there's no, no issues.
Yeah, not to exceed nineteen thousand, five hundred.
But, but that wasn't in the resolution, the resolution only addressed the roof costs, not the architect costs, so.
What, do we know what our total architect costs are? Because I know I saw that nineteen-five in the.
Yeah.
What, twelve hundred on that nineteen-five roughly?
Yeah, it's not even close to the nineteen.
There was some extras on some of the, she has the paperwork he sent it to us.
But it's not even close to the nineteen, I don't believe, is it?
I thought so, I thought it was nineteen-five plus the twelve hundred.
So that'd be over it?
There's something about billables that's on that page.
I didn't think it was over.
Okay, it might not be, maybe.
Well, there was, I know there was other stuff listed in there that they could charge for on top of that, if I remember right, with that nineteen.
Well, I said not to exceed nineteen, so I'm, I'm assuming.
What page was that on?
I think it's the last.
There's no page number on it.
Yeah, that's the last one.
Yeah. So that makes me assume that it's less than nineteen thousand, five hundred.
Well, and those are paid, right?
Yeah.
That's, that's up to date, we don't have anything.
We don't owe them nothing, we just owe the retainage to the roof company and that's where the, the difference comes in. We have like, I think it's six thousand or less than six thousand left in the ARPA fund and we need like a three thousand something to come out of building improvement to just pay off the roof project.
Under their fine print section, it says reproduction and distribution costs associated with bidding documents are not covered in the proposed not to exceed amount. It would be billed at actual cost to produce, so that was, that'd be the extra potentially. I knew I saw something else that was on top of that, but.
You're going to have to come back and have the board approve it then.
The resolution, yeah. I just wanted to touch base with you and see if you were okay with that before I did that, so.
Yeah, just put it on the agenda and we'll approve it and have it come out of the building thing.
Yep. Okay.
Thank you, Willie.
Sure.
But I do need you to either approve or disapprove the retainage.
We're going to get there.
Okay.
Do I have a motion to approve the certificate of payment for the retainerage of the courthouse roof, which is nine thousand, three hundred and thirty-two dollars and ninety-five cents? Jack? Do I have a second? Carter? Any more discussion? Seeing none, do a roll call vote, please.
Plack?
Yes.
Matt?
Yes.
Whacter?
Yes.
Stecker?
Yes.
Jerks?
Yes.
It's the first time in a long time I get to call it pretty same.
Motion carried, unanimous. Okay, we have a discussion decision to approve Resolution three, twenty-one, twenty-three oh one, which is a resolution setting the wage schedule for Cassuth County employees.
I sent you an email this morning asking if we could postpone that, Hailers Inc. is still working on that resolution, not quite done. So we are asking to put that on the agenda for next week.
You sent an email this morning, right?
I didn't.
I didn't.
I didn't see it.
You didn't?
Well, I didn't look at the email.
Well, I sent it to all users, you should be in all users, are you not?
Well, there was one came, you sent one.
I have that separated out into a different folder, so, yeah, I got it now that you sent it.
Yeah, nope, I sent one to all users.
I say I got it, so.
Yeah. Okay, okay.
Yeah, I, I separate them out.
I didn't get it, so I must not be in that all users.
Users, okay.
I, I didn't get it either.
Okay, I'll have to check on that.
Derek probably doesn't.
Derek's seven twenty-four.
I didn't get it either.
You should get it.
You should, you probably did.
Yeah, budget.
Or supervisor.
Right there it is. We sent it too.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I did.
I, well, I had seen you sent the one on budget at seven thirty.
Well, you can tell I didn't open it.
That, that's okay. So, so anyway, yes, that, if it's, if it's possible, we'll push that back to next week.
It is, let the agenda show that that's moved to next week. Are the minutes, excuse me? We are up to discussion appoint, Cassuth County EMS member.
I got it on the agenda. Phil's here for that too, I think, but yeah. I talked to Phil Smith, he's willing to serve and we have a at-large seat that's available. I think he'd be well suited to fill that role, so. I'd make a motion to appoint him as a member for the EMS board.
So if we're going to appoint members to the board, we should appoint the Elgon and the Soy City member at the same time.
They're part of the bylaws, that they're appointed by the city, right?
Yeah, but it says with approval of the board supervisors.
Okay, yeah, we could do that too.
So, and is he?
Did Soy City finalize theirs or make a choice?
They picked two, so I don't know, you want to handle that?
Did they designate a primary and an alternate?
They picked two, saying they had one vote.
So have you brought this to the EMS board?
Um, not to the, not the individual to the board, no, that's our decision here. But, um, I had talked to Bill and I had reached out.
I just talked this out this morning before I come in, so.
For Soy Cities.
So, we haven't even had a chance to discuss that, so I don't know how you want to do that one.
I don't know, do we? Well, that one, I mean, we probably won't be able to.
We can do this one, but the next one, I would say have a discussion with them and since there's two of them, have them figure out who would be the delegate and the alternate and then.
Right, they just need to have a primary and alternate.
Yep, and then.
I guess we could do, we could do Elgonas too, because theirs is.
Theirs is done.
So, and theirs is Jacob Jaden, so we could include that too.
Today?
If, if you guys are okay with it, yeah.
On the same motion?
Yeah, on the same motion, it'd be fine.
We're approving Elgon and the at-large.
Yep, and then.
But not Soy City.
Soy City, we would wait for clarification on primary or alternate.
So in your motion, you want to approve?
The agenda says an individual has one name under.
Bill's here.
No, it says appoint EMS member.
Why don't, why don't we have a second to the motion and then discussion?
I'll second the motion.
Okay, Mr. Whacter, thank you.
Now that the, now that the other seats have a delegate, I'll just appoint a member, so.
Well, yeah, and.
I know that's not part of your motion, I mean, that's a discussion later, so.
Well, I don't have an issue with Soy City having two people as far as they're concerned, but they're still only going to have one vote, so.
So what do your bylaws say on that for?
Just says that the city councils will show, appoint their representative.
Yeah, we could tell them just to pick one, call it a day. But I guess I don't have an issue with them having an alternate if someone can't make it, so.
I think that'd be beneficial to have one selected as primary and one as the delegate. Because that would count as their one representative.
Well, you would, you would have to have that if you had two, or we just say there's only one.
Unless you change your bylaws, you're going to only have one voting delegate, if I remember it.
Well, yeah, yep.
So, there's going to have to be a decision.
I think the word in the bylaws states they appoint one member.
Yeah.
I don't, I did not bring, copy that over, but.
I mean, the, the, the language of a delegate versus a appointed member, same meaning, so that I wouldn't worry about, but one versus two is the difference, yeah.
So regardless, we should wait?
We should wait for that.
Yeah, yep.
Yeah.
So the motion today is for Mr. Jaden and Mr. Smith?
Yep.
To be appointed to the EMS board?
Maybe that's not what the agenda said, well, I said it was Bill's chair.
That's in the, that's in the packet, that's not the agenda.
The agenda doesn't have a name.
It's just a EMS member.
Yeah.
It doesn't say that person.
That's not something that makes the agenda item invalid. The, the point of the topic is easily conveyed to the, to the public by EMS member versus members of the same topic.
If you feel more comfortable, we could put Mr. Jaden until next week and with the others, is that fine with everybody?
Would you prefer it that way? Jack, I don't really care, but.
But we'll do it that way.
Yeah.
So today, is there any more discussion on Bill Smith?
You need to amend your motion then.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'm fine with amending it.
You're finding with the second?
Yep.
Okay. Mr. Bill Smith is an EMS member. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried, unanimous.
Do you want me to do an agenda request for the members?
Phil, are you going to touch base with Soy City? Figure it out.
Will you send me an agenda request for the members?
Yeah. I'll do it for both of them.
Perfect.
So how do you want to word that? Do you want to just tell them they have to have one, or can they have a primary and a delegate? Alternate, I guess would be a better word, alternate.
Alternate would probably be a better word.
Delegate, alternate, and then.
As long as you understand, you only have one voting member.
And they do, I mean, they stated that this morning, but.
Okay.
Yeah. They just had to point two rather than one.
Yeah, designated voting member, something like that. That's really where it comes down to, isn't it?
One, zero, one.
Yeah.
Really up to?
One, zero, one.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
As long, yeah, as long as, as long as they know it's one vote, I mean.
Yeah.
We are up to the Board of Adjustment.
Eric, thanks.
Thank you, Jeff.
Morning.
Morning. Do you have any day for public discussion?
No, just your next item, Jim will not be present, he spelled Hill, so he wasn't going to come down. So he would appreciate your approval of that. That's all I really have.
Okay.
Good morning.
He's hiding behind the pool for you.
They like to hide behind the pool, that's okay.
If I sit over there, I can't see Tammy, she looks a lot better than what I can.
Thank you for that.
I didn't even know you was there. You, you're hiding real well, Jake.
You just made my date, Jake.
Huh, I can't believe that you'd say something derogatory about my looks.
Yeah, but I got everybody to laugh.
You did.
Including you, so it must be all right, yeah.
I, I'd have to agree with you. Although it hurts me.
I got a lot of chairs I could keep moving to the right, Roger. You know, block all the votes, I'm not doing anybody to the left.
Morning.
Morning.
Morning, everyone.
Morning.
Excuse me here quick, Willie. So, eighteen point seven acres. I think the wide side is thirteen, I don't see it as a progress, here's the, you have five point two and thirteen, you think. So, and that is one hundred and sixty-six bucks. So, everything's good on that. Oh, man. All right, very good.
Thank you.
First thing we have on the agenda is to appoint Jim Haldorfer to the Board of Adjustment.
Yeah, last, at the last meeting, the board meeting, I was upset a little bit, I wasn't sure exactly how the language read as far as being a member of both the Board of Adjustment and the zoning commission. Upon a little bit of research, it is in, it's addressed in the comprehensive plan and it does say at least one member of the Board of Adjustment shall also be a member of the Cassuth, of the county zoning commission. So I don't think there's any kind of a conflict with that and I do have a motion, I think it's in your electronic packet, to approve and appoint, approve of and appoint Jim Haldorfer for Bancroft, Iowa to the Cassuth County Board of Adjustment.
I would make that motion to approve Jim, is there a second?
Second.
Second, glad you're here. Any discussion?
I guess just for the, the commission and the Board of Adjustment, side by side, don't they kind of, doesn't the Board of Adjustment make decisions outside of what planning and zoning has approved? Isn't that kind of the nature of it?
They.
For variances?
Variances, conditional use. So, yes, they do, they look at the zoning ordinance and, and they, if there's reasons, they do grant it.
So you feel it would be good to have two members on goal above and beyond the one, or?
I.
Or would that be a conflict since they kind of go against each other in that regard?
If there, if there is conflict, they can certainly abstain from voting. I, I've never encountered, having, having said that, I've never encountered a situation where the one board member, one zoning commission member felt that there was a conflict with any kind of a a Board of Adjustment activity.
Okay. Any other discussion? Hearing none, do a roll call vote quickly.
Plack?
Yes.
Matt?
Yes.
Whacter?
Yes.
Second.
Yes.
Josh.
Yes, motion carried unanimous. Gravel pits, Doug.
Uh, yes, we have, and I, it is in your. Electronic folder, we have, uh, I believe it's five. Gravel pits, there's multiple motions there, and a table of all of the leases that we have.
Thank you.
So, we have, uh. Returned to us, we've had Dollhauser, Ag Dormbeer, Matt, who just took care of. Cory Hagan, Zach Nielsen, and I think it's Dave Blackman. I put a table there that had the, uh, previous three-year lease. And who had that, who the tenant was, and who the new tenant, uh, is, and what their, uh, rent is. So, I, I prepared separate. Motions for all of these, approving all of these and authorizing the board chair to sign them.
You, you appear what order we do it in?
I do not.
The first one I got up here is Dollhauser. Lease.
As long as both Tammy and I know.
Okay, Whitemore Pit, Township sixteen.
That's over Whitemore, yes, South, Whitemore Pits.
I'll make the motion to approve the lease.
Do I have a second on the Whitemore Pit?
Second.
Second by Pla, any discussion? All those in favor of approving, approving the lease, please vote by saying aye.
Aye.
Both, motion carried unanimous. The next one is Matt Dormbeer. And he's even sitting here. Hancock County.
No, this is a McGuinness gravel pit, uh, this would be right north of the Irvington gravel pits.
Got the wrong one. Anybody have any questions on it?
I'd make motion to approve.
Second?
I'll say.
Second by Blacker. Any discussion? Seeing now, all those in favor, please say aye.
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 Opposed, motion carried unanimous. The next one is Cory Hagan. Fairfield Township, Calavalt County.
This is the Zeno pit, uh, that's a quarter section there in Palo Alto County.
Anybody have any questions on it? Somebody like to make a motion?
I'll make the motion.
Blacker makes motion, who seconds?
Jack.
Jack seconds. Any discussion? Seeing now, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried unanimous. Next one is Zachary Nelson, and it's Orthell Township, Hancock County.
That's Monte Two, which is right there by the Hancock County gravel pits, kind of north and west of that.
Any, any questions? If not, I'd entertain a motion. Motion by Pla, second by.
Second.
Matt? Any discussion? All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, motion carried unanimous, the next one, David Blackwin.
Yeah, this is a small, uh, area that has some gravel in it, and, uh. A little bit east of the Zeno pit, um, cylinder pit, so. David.
Any questions? If not, I'd entertain a motion to approve.
So moved.
Motion by Stecker, second by.
Last.
Carter. Any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Opposed, motion carried unanimous, we run out of gravel pits.
Get those taken care of.
Did we do?
We have not received all of the leases yet, Carter.
Okay, so I need both. Um, Roger and Tammy, and I will be notarizing those.
The McNeese one, at one time, we talked about selling that.
Pardon me?
McNeese one?
Yeah, that, I'm still working in Co- and Cody Dormbeer, uh, I need to visit with Tammy also about those, so.
It's about three acres.
Of tillable, yes. Okay, sorry about that.
That, that one on the left looking towards the top, she looked pretty, pretty good.
Yeah. Here's just, uh, if, if you would like to write down, uh, what bids are. And on the back is a motion, uh, if we do decide to, uh. Sell a piece of equipment, uh, in your folder, is a flyer that, uh. Was, uh, how we advertised this truck, it is a two thousand Sterling dump truck. It, it has some problems with it, we're selling it as is, and we received. Five bids on those, I'll just open them up now.
We don't have any left with straight transmissions anymore?
Pardon me?
There's none left with straight transmissions?
Oh, yeah, we have. We do, oh, yeah.
Did you get much for questions on this one, or?
Uh, they.
Come look, or?
I, I directed them to the, uh, mechanic shop, so I was not very involved in it.
Okay, just curious.
Uh, this is Ben Struker. And he bid seven thousand five hundred dollars. Aaron Hunt, I should've said Ben is from Titanca, Aaron Hunt is from Renwick. Uh, Aaron bid ten thousand nine hundred eighty dollars. Randy Ilerts. He's from Albona.
Who was his first name?
Randy.
Oh.
Uh, he bid three thousand two hundred sixteen dollars. Ritzel Escavating, out of Burt. Uh, twenty-two thousand six hundred. And Jerry Kaye, out of Cylinder.
Who was that, Jerry?
Jerry, yeah. And he bid five thousand. So.
Ritzel.
Ritzel is the high. I think that's the price. So, I would recommend that we sell that basically.
I would maybe accept, Ritzel's, they bid for twenty-two thousand six hundred dollars. Motion by Pla, second by.
Second.
Stecker. Any discussion on the motion? Seeing now, all those in favor of a motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried unanimous.
Alright.
We have nothing in the folder about construction? In a right of way?
There is no request for, um, construction vote.
Then we would be up to discussion with the county engineer and zoning administrator.
Uh, yes, construction, uh, to bridge, I would assume that the contractor will be moving on. Uh, soon to finish up that guardrail work, and complete that bridge. Today, our asphalt work is being let, we have a project one mile from McGregor to eighteen, uh, P twenty. Then the Lox Creek Road, and there's a three-mile section of road right south of Low Rock. Uh, that is being let. Uh, we still have two open positions in the mechanic shop. We are re-advertising the same way we have, uh, previously, I did talk with Donna about accounts. We do not have any, uh. Any web-based applications, we are not members of anything, there will be a cost with that. And, uh, we, we have not purchased any subscriptions to those.
Did you look into see what those would cost, by any chance?
Uh, I relied on Donna, I guess you'll have to ask her.
Think places like ZipRecruiter, Indeed, and?
Yeah, Indeed's the big one I would've thought of, but yeah. Any of that type of stuff.
The end of last week gravel roads, they were, uh, less than desirable conditions, I drove. Over a lot of, uh, many miles of gravel roads, some were in better condition than others, but, uh, yesterday, we came in a little bit early. Uh, started blading, today, we're gonna pull in a little bit later in the afternoon, working a little bit of overtime. Trying to get things in shape. My foreman did not get an opportunity to drive on any gravel roads yesterday, but, uh, Scott and Bill said things were a lot better yesterday. Uh, we are in, we still need to amend the secondary road department budget, the Albona Airport expansion. Uh, needs to, is going to be letting that, uh, project soon, if you have plans. Um, I think they're about ready to go out to bidders for that. And then from zoning, uh. The expenditures in the budget, and I emailed this to you upon request of Supervisor Stecker. We have fifteen hundred dollars budgeted to expand, we have spent one thousand four hundred and sixty dollars, forty-four cents. So we have thirty-nine dollars and fifty-six cents that we can spend, um. Or will be over budget. Bills on hand, Bancroft Register is one hundred dollars and twenty-six cents, Sway City Herald Press is one hundred dollars and twenty-six cents. The Super County Advance is sixty-three dollars, sixty-two cents, and the Albona Reminder is one hundred ninety-four dollars and sixty cents. Uh, my addition quick on that was four hundred fifty-eight dollars and seventy-four cents. So, it is difficult right now to. Have planning and zoning without an amendment, so I, I would ask that we get that budget amended. I don't know when you guys believe you will be doing that, but, uh, if you could let me know, I'd appreciate it.
Do you need this amended before having the next? It's meeting, or?
We can't make expenditures until the budget's amended.
What's that?
Can't publish until you.
Correct.
I don't know how I'm gonna, I'm trying to figure out how I'm gonna get the four hundred fifty-eight dollars. Paid.
We do need to move forward with our process and, um, some, somehow we need to keep, keep the ball rolling here. I don't know, when, when are we planning to do?
Well, usually we do it in April.
Sure.
So.
I'm just thinking if we wait till April, for the planning and zoning expenses, then it's another. After many weeks still, we're presented with something from the planning and zoning, and then after many weeks still, we.
Well, and the reason, we wait till April is 'cause that's the last budget amendment for the year.
Sure.
So we can't do another budget amendment after that, so we wait to see how other departments are doing, because we don't.
Yeah, I understand.
Want, want them to go over either, so that's usually why we, we wait till April to do it. Um, and plus, we have to post and publish and all that kind of stuff, so by the time we do all that, it's gonna be. Mid-April. If we do that, and it has to be done by the end of May, so, I mean, we can do it anytime, just keep in mind that. If we do it too early.
It'll impact everything.
We don't wanna miss anything. Unless you're gonna do two, unless you're gonna do one now, that we set up now, and then do another one.
Well, that's what I'm, I mean.
But we've, that'll be, that'll make, we do that, that'll make.
Three in a year. And this one would be?
This one would be the second one.
Right, it would be the second one, but.
When do we, what was the timeline on the first one?
November, I think.
Can we amend just for, on zoning and still wait on the other departments, or?
You can, but, it's a lot of work and a lot of extra costs.
Sure.
Cause you have to have public hearings and publishing and all that.
The amendment will cost more than what you put in planning and zoning.
Right, it'll cost more than the four hundred fifty-eight dollars is a problem.
Right now, Doug, you can't, can, can you have another meeting with the planning and zoning commission, but not until? That's all, that needs to be public.
I can't expend any money.
Right.
Um, we s- we need to spend, we still need to pay the members for the last hearing and I don't know what that's gonna add up to. Um, if somebody came in with the zoning variance this afternoon. Those get notice, public notice. It's, it just makes it difficult.
You wanna talk to Elizabeth and see if there's another way that we can do this without?
There isn't.
There isn't either.
You have to have a budget amendment, we can't do that. Um, the, the only other thing would be to talk to all department heads and let them know that we're gonna start the budget, last budget amendment of the year, if that's what you wanna do. And that they need to look at their budgets very closely and see if they think they're gonna need to amend it. You know, now, and because there won't, you know, be another time to do it, I mean, that would be the only other. Option is just to let everybody know that they need to look at it now and decide if they're gonna, if they have enough to, to make it through.
Well. We'd be fifty days ahead of normal.
I mean, we usually start looking at it now, um, we're just gonna have to expedite it quicker, which is fine.
Is that your suggestion, Carter?
Uh, I don't know what's the suggestion, but. I mean, I understand the sense of urgency for the situation here, but. I don't wanna negatively impact everything else either, wish we would've added more to it in November, when we did the last one, knowing all this was coming, but. Don't have much choice at this point, so. I don't know, I don't know if everyone will be able to get an accurate enough picture in short order.
Well, I think.
I guess just start the conversations, I mean, there's no harm in starting the conversation on it.
We can see, see where everyone's at this week and then.
Okay.
Next week we can take it up from there.
Yeah.
See what happens. Probably do the best with action, I, from what I'm hearing.
Yeah, but we'll see what we can do.
Is there any funds transferable for any departments to tell the amendment or that's not possible?
Now, if you can go over in a line item, that's fine, as long as you don't go over in service area, so if he goes over in his, in, in that. Line item, but the problem is it's planning and zoning, so that's in itself its own department, so I don't know how many lines are in that department.
Well, they all add up to, all the lines add up to fourteen.
So that's the problem, you can't go over that department area or that, that service area, so by law you, you're, you can't do that. So that's why you have to do a budget amendment first. If he had more lines in that budget, then yes, he could transfer within that budget, but because the whole budget is that amount for that department, then no.
Nowhere else he can transfer. Right on.
Just county governor?
Yeah, cause I mean, even, even right now notices are already over, but it's still within the total.
Well, we'll do what we can do, Doug.
Yeah.
Okay, before that, this. Created yesterday, taken at four o'clock. Retiring. We have sixty thousand dollar vehicles that we gotta drive to them. Roger, don't debate it. We filed a written complaint. That's what we got.
Where was the written complaint filed, who?
Your office. Rodney Gray.
When was it?
Last week.
I'm sorry, I didn't, didn't, uh.
There's, that's not the only spot, there's three to five spots in the Mar. Nine hundred thirty-three Ninety Street.
I was on it last week. I drove on there.
We're gonna get sand or we're gonna get rock?
I don't know, Jake.
Roger, I'm in.
Well, yours isn't the only complaint, I mean.
I don't give a rat's ass about everybody else's. I don't know what's gonna be done on mine. If I fix it, I'm gonna maintain it, I'm gonna do it the way I wanna do it. And it's gonna be done.
There's a lot of roads that have issues, Jake.
I've been on just as many as I've already been on. I've listened to a lot of complaints in Northern Germany. It's time to get something done with this. Everybody says it takes a lot of dollars, you know, my lane's not short. In the last forty years, I've never put a full load of rock on it at one time. I'm micro-manning it. I got smaller sports, you guys got smaller sports, but I don't go through my lane, I go through the road. He graded you yesterday, I was through it already this morning. Every one of those five spots, you just poof, about hits your head on the steering wheel. So it's time to do something. Thirty years ago, I saw the dogs. I had it run it up a foot deep in one spot, they brought in a load of rock, I could take you to that spot this day and that's the hard spot on the road. When you're out west, if you come down through the mountains and your brakes fail on the simmering, what do they do, they gotta brake run, what's in the brake run? Sand. The sand is not, sand stops you, sand is not a factor unless it has rock with it. You guys do what you're gonna do, my last proposal is, neighbor and I talked about it, if you send a truck. And a man to purchase fuel, we'll pay for the road stuff. Too low. I'll leave it at that, think about it. You wouldn't be driving out of your seventy thousand dollar vehicle and bottoming out all the time either and put up with it, so. Go from there. Not a big a county's been there all year, three times to one on their roads. Cloud and snow grading, it's three times to one. Yeah, they probably got some more money, but they're using the, and they've graded my lane from the east all the time. You guys don't tend to glorify and say, oh, man, spots to the east. But they got this rock to the east that has gotten mixed in with it, it's coming along pretty good. If I had to go west all the time, I'd bet here three weeks ago, but I thought I'd let everybody else do it. So, see what you can do, like I said, but if we, if we flip the bill, we're gonna put it where we wanna. Go from there. My phone's ringing, I believe in you.
Thank you.
Hello?
I'll just say I do not believe I've received anything from Rodney Gray. I will be checking on that when I go back down to the office.
I had to tell him to call Rodney.
Well, I, I understood it to be a written complaint, is what I understood it to be.
Sam, that's what he said.
Doug has a guy called Burden from the O two, uh, wants to look at their, going, eighteen, going back to their shed out here. Says it's pretty rough.
I, I mean, I, yeah, I'll talk, I'll talk with him.
Hey, I just don't like that.
Thank you.
Like that message last week. He said, he actually used, Chuck, and he says that, tell him that we wanna pay.
It's a city road.
Oh, it is, so I, I told him I didn't know, I didn't know if it was.
I mean, I mean, there's, there's parts of it that are city, there's parts of it that are county.
That's what I told him, it's a damn tricky area, I, I wasn't sure until I told you whether it was city or, or county road.
If the state wants it, they can, they can make arrangements to take over it too.
He said you guys, I think he said the county.
We do. We do. So, but it is. I mean, just that airport area, uh, there was action by the city council and there was action by the Sioux County Board of Supervisors. Cause portions of that road are city, portions of that road are county.
Yeah, that's kind of what I thought, that kind of makes it.
Part of it is an annex into the city limits.
Anyway, I told my.
Alright, thank you.
Anything else for Doug? It might be my suggestion that you have the operators in every township. Put a map on there and their maintainers, when they're maintaining and write down some of the spots that are black.
They do.
Yeah, and, and, you know, do something, that was my suggestion to Mr. Gray too.
We're working on it.
Yeah, but I, I know. So that we get something where we need it the worst. Thanks Doug.
Thanks.
Thank you guys.
Wanna take a break or finish?
Without that, thanks.
Couple of margins here, let's do it, yeah.
Clerk for Sherman Township, we have a person that's been appointed. Alice Burden.
We have to do the appointing.
Harry Burden.
We're gonna do the appointing, we have an appointee, I should've seen it on the list.
There you go.
I'll move to appoint, Harry Burden is township clerk for Sherman Township.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Carter and Whacter, any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Closed, motion carried unanimously. Cresco Township. We have Wade Isenbarth. Is that close?
I think so. That's what I would've said. I'll make motion to approve, appoint him.
I'll second the motion, any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Closed, motion carried. We are up to discussion with our auditor.
Okay, so this morning I also emailed you a copy of the budget that was sent to Department of Management yesterday. Our max tax levy will be in the paper on Thursday and in Algona and Wednesday in Bancroft and Sway City. Um, if you have any questions about anything, please let me know. Um, April fourth is the date that is set for a max tax levy hearing. At, after that, max tax levy, if everything is approved, we'll set the date for. The budget hearing, which, um, I have proposed for April twenty-fifth at eight-thirty. Um, I ha- I am in the process of getting Adam in the engineer's office all the information, he helps put together the charts and, um, data for the. Budget presentation, so I'm working on getting that to him. Our election audit went great, uh, so we're done and finalized with that. Um. So right now, we're, we're working on finishing up everything and then we'll get started on the budget amendments and. I'll send out an email to all the department heads so we can see where they're at with that, see if we can get a feel. At, at the end of every month, Melissa sends out reports to all the departments so they can look at where they are for their fund status. Um, and then I look at all of them too, to make, to see how we're setting for each thing, so they should have a good feel of, of where they're at. Um, they'll just have to kind of know, the, the only bad thing is if something happens that they weren't expecting, but, um. At this point, we're, we're March, almost April, so we're close to being finished with the year, so hopefully they'll have a decent idea of where they're sitting. Um, so, and I will, I will double check with Elizabeth and see. Um, if there's anything we can do in the, in the meantime, if he needs to have anything, I'll double check with her just to, just to see, but. I d- I don't know of anything, but, um. See what else. I think that's, I think that's all that I have.
Jack?
Well, just, if you did, everybody else get that email from Nancy or somebody, saying that they were gonna make it. I couldn't open it up, I didn't know if anybody else.
When did that come in?
Oh, week ago.
So it said Sunday.
I tried to open it too and it wouldn't open.
But I can't open it.
I couldn't either.
I was able to open it.
You had it open?
Yeah. It went on.
It says open with Microsoft Edge or default browser when I go, default browser, it doesn't open.
Does that show that I was listed because I didn't get, I only got one email on Sunday?
Do you have Microsoft Edge in that machine?
Well, they got different, uh, they're, yeah, than our iPads, they could probably open it because they got Microsoft.
But it was in a Google Docs form.
So we don't have Google Docs?
Was it?
It was, yeah.
So. Like, I couldn't open it, I was just curious where everybody else.
Yeah, yeah, I'm in it, okay, okay, yeah.
Oh, you have to open it.
Yeah, I don't know.
Can you go back to you?
You probably don't have Microsoft Edge on there, if you select default browser.
I did, yeah, I didn't get that. It, um, it does, it won't open, it says cancel.
That was the hard one. Yeah.
Uh, do you get three numbers?
No, so, he's in.
Minus three point five and three point five in three.
Just had to try it again.
I didn't, I didn't, I guess, I don't know.
I'm just curious how that works.
Do you guys sign it, send it back to her?
Uh, it goes, it doesn't go to Nancy, it goes to the, um. To the state, like to be presented at the state house, to the legislators, to all of them.
You can't sign it on here, do you have to print it out or?
No, you can, you can.
You'd have to email it in.
I, no, iPads might not be able to.
No, you put your county and then your name.
Unless it's, is it a fill-in form?
It's, yeah.
Oh, okay.
So you don't have to fill in that, where it says sincerely.
Well, I didn't say a problem, you know, you have to get set, have a domain, so I don't have a lot to say anymore.
Right, but it'll, it'll fill in, if you fill out those three line items there, then.
There should be a submit button.
Yeah, click submit and it'll be fine.
Yeah, I'll send it, I guess I'll sign and send it because.
Anything else, Drew?
No, I was adding just one, don't have anything else.
Carter?
Um, I had wellness committee meeting next, or last, uh, Wednesday morning, um. Yes, so we're going to be changing our meeting times every month, Donna has a conflict every other month, so we have two different times depending on the month. Um, so we're gonna be having it the first Wednesday of every month now at eight-thirty in the morning and that, just consistently, so, um. But, other than that, they're, they were talking about, um, doing another picnic this summer and. And possibly having us grill or, or, uh, and, you know, having a county picnic, so. Our weather was not nice enough to go walk around Smith Lake last week, so that was the, that was about all from that, um, I did. I did attend a meeting with some other supervisors from other states, um, South Dakota, um, in regards to the carbon pipeline. And, um, presented with some food for thought, uh, some things to check out with Todd to see what his initial thoughts are, um, a couple chapters of the IO code and. But, so I need to visit with him in the coming week about that. Other than that, that's all I have.
Mr. Whack?
I actually had quite a week. We did not, I did not have any meetings, so. Just had some conversations with some different people, so it was, that's about it.
Doug?
I did not have any meetings, um, got juvenile detention this Friday. But, um, a lot of, a lot of calls and stuff, especially about the roads, um. Kind of normal, normal business in that regard.
You're talking about Saturday or?
Um, yeah, we had the legislative forum on Saturday, there was. Kind of two parts to it, there was the, the normal main part for everyone in the public and then there was also a meeting set up for elected and appointed officials afterwards. With the same, um, representatives and during both times, I thought we had some good conversations, there was. Discussions about a number of bills in front of, in front of them right now and some that have already been passed and set, but, um.
Who was there for representatives? Who was there for representatives?
Henry Stone was not, oh, yeah, for us, it was me and Roger and Carter helping, um. Henry Stone was sick that morning, so he was not able to make it, but John Wills was there this time, but she was not last time. And Dave Rowley was there again, so we had the two of them, one for House and one for Senate, um. Yeah, I had good conversation, but property taxes was a big, big conversation, and one of the, one of the comments made by Wills was that this, this property tax bill is not necessarily targeted at counties like us, it's other counties that are mismanaging things, for lack of better words, and. Well, yeah, you can say that, um, and in response to that, I had brought up juvenile detention reimbursement by the state because if they want to target cities or counties that are basically spending a blank check, said Polk County would be a prime example because their detention facility runs less bed days in a year than us and gets reimbursed twice as much as we do from the state because they spend more money, so they just spend more because they know they'll get more back. And, I mean, we're basically punished for running efficiently. And so if you want to target certain counties, have at it with something like that, and I don't know if we're getting traction on that this year, but we are, we are getting some traction on the reimbursement side of detention in general, um. Nothing is set in stone, but had several good conversations with legislators, and I think we if, if all goes as I would hope and expect, it looks like we should get some increases in funding in that regard, which will help our detention center, which then in turn helps all the counties that are members of it, so that's positive traction.
You should have, now, if you don't get it this year, you never will because of the way that setup is in the House and the Senate.
I think, I think we've got a fighting chance this year, and there's been several good conversations in having John Wills and Henry Stone in the leadership positions they're in, I think that will help, I visited both of them about it, um. So, yeah.
Before, it was always Polk County that always threw the monkey wrench in getting anything close to having equal share of the dollars that the state spends.
Yeah, well, we might have to try and address that next year, but if we get the funding as a whole, the biggest piece to that is all the counties and all detention centers and everything should be supportive of it because it's affecting everyone in a positive manner, it's if someone else is losing funding, they'd be the ones who'd be opposing it, but, um. We got a positive fighting chance this year at least, so. That's, I think that's about all I got.
Well, Wednesday I went to Des Moines, I did talk to Stone on Wednesday, and, and he said he was gonna take into consideration our issues on taxing, and they're limiting our taxing, and I explained to him that what you're doing is probably going to shift tax from getting rid of supplement is gonna shift tax from everybody to the rural. I said, Prime Bureau's not gonna like it, they're, they're supporting it in the beginning, but they don't understand what they're supporting.
I told him that exact same sentence when I was in his office.
Yeah, and I talked to Senator Goof and Senator Brown and Senator, and House Representative Thompson. One, one I forgot now, but all the same issue, be careful what you do, you know. And the other thing I told him is, you know, like here for too many Republicans in Des Moines is too many Republicans in Des Moines, and you start goofing everything up, you will lose your majority because it happened before, it'll happen again. And, uh, yeah, like he said Saturday, we had a good conversation about taxes. Uh, the cities, cities were there well represented, and I think it was a good conversation. I think they understand it, but they don't wanna, they wanna do something to lower property taxes, is what I got out of it, I don't know what you thought. But they don't wanna touch, they don't wanna touch hospitals, they don't wanna touch schools, and they don't wanna touch anything that they just wanna touch the county share, and so like we get from the cities is sixteen percent. They took it all the way, it still wouldn't make a big difference in the county budget, so they're in a hard time.
Probably because the amount of emails that they get from county supervisors is hard to noticeable compared to the emails they get for education.
Yeah.
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 Or anything else.
Yeah, I think, I think that's where we can make more of an impact, is being more engaged with them because they're not gonna know how it impacts us unless we tell them.
Yeah.
They just, no one else is gonna, no one else is gonna say it.
I think they're they, uh, they understand the issue, but they really don't understand how to address it.
That's, yeah, that's part of it.
They, they definitely see something needs to change, something needs to fix.
Yeah.
Something needs to happen, they're just not sure how to.
They're really I'm gonna say they, they'd rather just do something to the counties because it's easier than to address anything in the school budget or hospital budget.
Or community colleges.
Yeah, or extension council. You're the easiest devil to address. Anybody have anything to come before the good of Cassuth County? Anybody got any suggestions on roads?
If I did, I'd say.
You know, I, I know rock's more expensive, but when you look at, um, the cost of hauling, like the cost of new trucks, fuel, everything that goes into actually delivering that product, um. I, I'm not saying we can rock every road by any means, but there's definitely spots that would benefit from some level of rock rather than pouring gravel on them constantly, in my opinion.
Hey, what do you think of what Jay was saying in terms?
Well, actually, actually what he said was rather interesting because, um, I don't remember the engineer's name that was presenting at the spring conference, um. Now, this is two of his pictures, um. Let me find it. John, or Jacob Dorius, Washington County Engineer, um, and one of the things he talked about was public-private partnerships, and he said he's worked extent, him and his office have worked extensively on, um, communication in general with individuals, businesses, et cetera, that are out in the county, and some have been rock projects to stabilize gravel roads, some of them have been paving projects for bigger companies that wanted a paved road instead of a gravel road or such like that, and having a cost-sharing type agreement, so it's not all a tax burden, and.
Well, that's certainly happened here, the pass, you know, the long pass, long ago pass means why some of the blacktop roads are there, you think the one north of Sexton just ends because Grant's family back in the day wanted the blacktop off the ground, so.
Yeah. So, that might be something we could explore more, I mean, we had an offer today, if, if we haul the materials, they'll pay for it, I mean. That's probably a small example, but I don't know if that's something we can work on and explore a little more because I mean, we can't just throw a million dollars at it and, in tax dollars, we gotta be responsible in that regard, so.
There, I, I think there are areas where rock would, yelp, where we got black dirt showing through now.
Well, and there's.
But it is difference between three dollars and eleven dollars a ton, I don't know if the hauling would be a lot different.
Well, your hauling would probably be the same, but you'd haul it once instead of five times maybe for the same section of road, I mean, there's a, there's a frostbite about a mile south of my place that was bad in nineteen or twenty, whatever year it was, I believe, and it got tore up by some heavy semi-traffic, and it was in rough shape for a while, but they put a load of rock in there in this spring, that area never moved a bit. I mean, it was solid as with all the weather we had, the rain, the snow, the freezing thawing never left a track in that area where the rock was, so I'm not, and, and that was spread thick, and it was, it took a while to get worked into the surface, so I don't know that we need to bury it on everything, but I think if we can get out there earlier, and if we can do a thinner rate, we could go farther, but if you get out there earlier it'll support it more, so then you don't actually bust through the, the crust instead of, um, riding up on top.
I don't know, they're, they're trying to build hog set up in your area up north, and they're gonna ruin that road, they've already got it ruined.
Brian was talking about that.
They've already got it ruined, they're gonna make it worse, it's a no maintenance road to begin with.
And that's something where the, the hog companies, like Doug's talked about, the taxes those buildings pay. Maybe some of those companies, like, they were just pulled out a feed truck by Bancroft.
Yeah.
Some of them, if they're having issues getting products to their sites, maybe the companies would step in and say, we'll pay for the rock if you guys haul it and work it in, I mean, that'd be, that'd be probably one of the first places I would look, would be Smithfield and Christensen and some of those others that have, yeah, that have service, that they need those roads and they depend on them, and they're hauling heavy loads all the time, I mean. I think that would be a great place to start, but.
Dan, why aren't we getting these credit card statements before the meeting?
She forgot to bring them, it's Brittany.
That's how this happens every, every, almost all the time.
I will talk.
These have to come in before the approval.
Okay.
Okay.
Well, they're all.
They're all in the packet.
I don't know.
Yeah.
Listen, they don't show the individual stuff they're doing.
No, but you don't see that usually till after you've made the motion and passed it anyway.
Because I mean, like here is, oh, they've let eighty-two thousand dollars to give for a house fire, I don't know if that's really kosher or not.
It's kind of what they do always.
That was under emergency management?
Yeah.
For a home, a house fire.
It would be for the personnel and stuff on the scene.
It's for the firemen that are at the scene, yeah.
And then there was a computer button, like a laptop computer, is that still screwed up to Derek?
Who was that from?
That's for next fiscal year, that budget's changed.
Yeah.
So for now, if they had something to replace, it's probably, it's, it's part of the plan, so yeah, that would.
Thousand sixty-nine dollar computer button.
From what department check?
Is that also under emergency management? What it says on here, what's.
I think, wasn't that through, our EMS or emergency management, which one of them wanted a new computer?
Yeah, all, all of those are, all of those are listed on the claim, in your package.
County conservation.
County conservation, they got their own board.
Yeah, they have their own.
And, and for the stuff through Derek, that's not changing till next fiscal year anyway. And I don't know if they're included in that or not, I think they might be, but I'm not sure.
I don't know about that either.
I'd like to see these before the, look at these before the meetings that always come in, like, later in the day.
We, yeah, well, years ago, we used to get them before the meeting started and look through them.
Right.
So not supposed to be.
And we're not supposed to do that, so.
I mean, they're credit cards, we really need to watch it, we'd have trouble, you know. You know, that's years ago, we're not paying attention to them, they're not a good.
Don't forget, the fourth, we have our budget hearing for the budget.
What time is it though?
Eight thirty.
It's during the regular voting.
Yeah. In case anybody asks. People have asked me how much more money we're gonna collect. I tell them, actually, we're gonna lower the rural, rural services.
Well, that's just on our levy, but yeah.
But the other one's going up three point five, which is.
Yeah, if you look at the total taxes, it's actually going up quite a bit, and part of that is EMS. Well, yeah, part of it's EMS and which was voted on.
Six percent of it.
Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah, I have.
Quite a bit of it is, have you got anything from the hospital yet?
Yes, they brought their budget in yesterday, but, um, I have not had a chance to certify it yet.
Okay, so they're asking you, you don't know they're asking you?
No, that, that's, no, I do not.
Anything else on the budget?
Oh, a point for the budget with the, um, discussion we had on Saturday, we were one of the very few counties in the state that actually lowered our taxes when the mental health levy came off.
Yeah.
So you can see that in the numbers for all of us that are, have it on our computers here. Between twenty-one and twenty-two, well, twenty-one, twenty-two actuals was nine point four eight four. Twenty-two, twenty-three was nine four four three, so me, and me and Dan were talking yesterday, we looked it up, mental health was about three hundred thousand ballpark, so our increase was a little bit less than that actually for, so that went away and then some kind of filled its place, but now we'll have all the stuff we're dealing with plus EMS that was voted on and all that, so we're there'll be a significant jump in taxes for this year.
And Kyle, after we talked yesterday, did a little bit more looking, we also had the, um, health insurance on top of that too, so that made a little bit of difference.
Yep.
Because we didn't have those rates yet.
Yeah, but yeah, just food for thought that we were one of the few that actually did take that out of the budget to some extent.
Now, Rowley Wills wants to send out postcards to every person that has property and tell them about our public hearing.
If we're raising more than three percent, be a postcard to every, every property owner.
He's gonna send that, or he wants us to send?
No, that's gonna be in law for us to send it.
I knew that, you really appreciate.
Does he know we already have to publish it in the paper?
Yeah.
Yeah.
The law says we already have to do that?
Not enough.
Yeah, I know, the new one is a postcard to everyone.
Did you tell them, why doesn't the state send out, send out a postcard, or can they do something stupid?
You could have told them that if you were there.
Did you ask him how we're, how we're gonna do for that, if he's ever cutting our budget?
I, I, I asked if he realized there's a cost to that, and he said yes.
He said it was worth it, I think that's was his comment, you know, he said it'd be worth it, worth the cost.
And, and I, I did follow up saying I don't disagree with more information is better, but I followed that up with the limits on our, um, tax, and I said, you might wanna consider that, so. You know, I don't know how far it'll get considered, but that's the proposal.
Be spending more tax dollars to tell people about the tax dollars.
That we're spending.
That we're spending.
If, if the legislation goes through, we can't grow more than two point five percent anyway, or, so it's not gonna matter.
No, in, in.
It's, I, I would say it's kind of, it's not far from being finished, but it's not close to being finished either, so I think there'll still be some substantial discussions about it, but.
Well, I think no matter what happens, they're gonna have a discussion on property taxes, and it's all gonna come back to the county share of the property taxes. That's what I got out of it, I don't know if anybody disagrees with that.
That'd be pretty close, that's about the only thing they're gonna try and affect.
Which then they're gonna do away with income tax in the state because they have too much money, but they're worried that the county's spending.
Yeah, I, I mean, you remember when I highlighted that their budget is looking good because they pass all the stuff down to us to do?
Yep. Yeah, oh, well, anything else come for the good of Cassuth County, other than our irritation with the state legislators? Then Rhodes. Nope.
Motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn?
Josh.
Whacter?
I'll second.
Whacter, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.